But you're welcome to stay for the parking study. You don't have to.
Gary might stay.
Did Gary just volunteer today?
Gary just volunteered.
Don't worry.
This is the M A P C, right? Yeah, we need to hear about this.
Well, it's not. It's a separate grant from the Department of Transportation. No, 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 we have no.
He's joking, he's not funny.
Alright, so just some background on this. This was another grant that we received. We had applied to the Department of Housing and Community Development for some funds to conduct a parking management study. So we contracted with StanTech. And the woman that we've been working with, Liza Cohen, was not able to come today, but Tom Yardley is here in her stead. And while he was not directly involved in our study, he's conducted numerous studies that are similar in nature. And so he's going to give us a readout of what they found. And just as a side, Liza did come and meet with the Downtown Revitalization Work in Grohl.
Come after me.
Last week, so that they heard all the recommendations and are considering them and putting together their final recommendations for the strategic plan. So we wanted to bring this to you to get any input that you might have as well before the group meets in December and comes up with their final recommendations. So, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Erin.
Oh Erin, oh my gosh, I haven't seen, we've been talking about so much. I'm thinking it's another person who came. Yes, Erin was involved.
Erin?
Cameron.
Erin, yes, Erin Cameron.
She worked with Liza and us on the study, so she can speak to any details as well.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Great, so, yes, I am, I understand then, but my name's Tom Yardley. I work at StanTech. Jason Schreiber, who I think you guys met with already, maybe?
Yes.
And I work very closely together all over the place, actually all over the country doing different things. We love this stuff, so. I've been, you know, studying Top School over the past few days, so I feel pretty comfortable.
Could I just jump in time and just show them? That the timing of this is really good, because they've been working hand in hand with M A P C for the Downtown Revitalization Work, so.
Yeah.
They've been communicating and feeding information to one another, and they also participated in the visioning session. So they brought all of their information at that point in time, so we got a lot of good feedback from people in town.
Tom, will you tip that screen up just a little bit?
Yeah.
There we go.
I apologize for not having the correct dumble for my computer, because we actually were organized enough to bring a projector, but not the right attachment, so I'm sorry. So, just to recap a little bit, and I don't want to tread over all ground that you've already covered with Jason, but, you know, we're basically on a retainer with the state. We do, you know, these quick-hit parking studies across downtowns. You know, they're great for us, we enjoy doing them, you know, they're interesting, every town is different. So that's the sort of scope of what we're doing, you know, I do a lot of different stuff as well. We're kind of multimodal planners, so we really, we specialize in parking, I would say, but we see it very much from a complete streets sort of perspective as well. And the reason, you know, I would think as a board of selectmen you care about those things is because of town revitalization as well. For us, it's really not just about parking. Every person who drives at some point has to get out of their car and becomes a person who walks around on foot. I don't like to say pedestrians either, because I feel that sort of artificially separates these things. But, so I think, you know, parking to us is a key to unlocking a lot of, a lot of different things and challenges. I just put a quick agenda together, just quickly, I think time is short. I don't know how long I have right now, but I don't want to go on for too long, but.
You're the last one on our checklist.
Okay, that's easy then. You guys just maybe quickly introduce yourselves to me, just.
I'm Dick Adam of Selectman.
Woody Jackson.
So.
David Larson, resident.
Okay.
Lynn Bravida, Selectman, and also working on the Downtown Revitalization.
Gary Wells, foreman at the.
Donna Rich standing in for the executive assistant on minutes.
And we have another Selectman that is currently in the hospital, he's the chairman, and he's not, obviously not here.
But he's been working very closely with us, because he's working on the Downtown Revitalization, so he knows all of this.
John Spencer is his name, and you've talked to him or?
Yes, we have, he's in all these slides, it's nothing new to him.
Yeah, okay, that's right. He'll get out of the hospital someday, we don't know when.
Gosh, that sounds, I hope he's alright. So the main things we're covering are, you know, some of the existing condition stuff, which I think you're already familiar with, what is your parking supply? The quick summary of the counts that were done. Erin was out in the field counting your supply, you have roughly 700 parking spaces. I think recapping some of the public input is interesting, because I saw things that people told us that make a lot of sense to us in terms of then putting in recommendations, which is always good, because it's not really, yes, there are things we can bring to this, but ideally you want it to be driven by what people are telling you who live here and use parking and walk around downtown every day, they know it much better than we do. We did a modeling exercise, looking at the parking system, and, you know, hypothetically, were you to increase development in the downtown area, not saying that's necessarily something you want to do, you know, could the system absorb additional development? And then we have a series of draft recommendations, and then mostly we're going to focus on a discussion today. As your parking supply, you know, you don't have, you know, there's a ton of official public parking at all, there's some at the MBTA lot down this side of town. There's the shopping center here, and then most of this parking is not really signed as it's going to be towed or anything, but people just know that it's generally for that particular business or use. And there's limited, but at least marked on-street parking. A lot of downtowns don't even have their on-street parking marked, which I think it's a plus here, just because if you gradually shift to a different system, at least people are already used to the idea of there being designated spaces on the street, it's a bit safer. This just, you know, goes through how that breakout of supply is. It's more, I think, helpful for you guys to have on file and the information. So we documented the number of spaces and by general restrictions, whether they're public, unregulated. None of it is paid, which is an interesting situation for us, a lot of places we go to, they're paid.
Excuse me, Tom.
Yes?
You had that on graph that you showed. There is a graph from the Revitalization Project from a meeting ago that's online. Is that the same one?
It's the same one.
Okay, so this is, if there's anybody watching, so to speak, we can look it up at any time under the Revitalization, and it's a thing, and it did show, that's the same one, that's the answer.
If there is anybody watching, we can provide you these slides.
You should grab.
It's on our website.
The show.
Slideshow presentation.
I think it's the way, whatever you gave at the working session.
Okay, yes, this is update, oh, I know.
That's it, no, 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 that's it.
So I mean, the categories, you have some public parking that's mostly going to be on-street or in your off-street public lot. Restricted parking, which is usually attached to a particular business. Unregulated, meaning it's just not marked, but people will be parking in those spaces. The shopping center, some handicap spaces, no parking areas, I don't know if there are tow zones or fire hydrants or things like that. And then informal parking, which again is just where people are parking, but nothing is officially marked. Erin went out in the summer and did four data collection periods. She went across downtown to see how busy all the supply was.
And I just mentioned, Tom, it was actually while school was in session. It was in June, but it was.
It's the first week of June, school was still in session.
So we still have the traffic from the buses and the parents, et cetera.
That'd make a difference, for sure.
To make it, you know, because that's indicative of nine months out of the year.
It's a good thing to note exactly when, if people question the data, and they always do, then you can say, well, we were conservative, we looked at it when schools were in session. And just to be clear as well, we looked at the entire supply, so everything on-street and technically public, and then went into lots as well and counted, you know, on people's properties, how busy those spaces were.
On people's property?
Yep.
Not private homes.
Not private homes, but, you know, businesses.
Private businesses.
Private businesses. So again, the goal with all of these studies is to get a snapshot of what the entire system looks like, because, you know, sometimes people ask us, well, why don't you just focus on the public supply? Well, if you want to come up with a study that tells you you're going to need to build a parking garage and just look at the public supply, then that's what you'll get. So we try to look at it from a more comprehensive system, system-wide approach. So, you know, interestingly to me, this is not typical of the demand pattern, but these bars across the top reflect the time periods that were collected, so nine, one, four, sixteen hours. And the blue bar is how busy those spaces were, the rest of the bar is unoccupied spaces. And so your peak demand time is nine in the morning, somewhat unusual, usually it's around lunchtime. Some places, if there's a busy restaurant, see, that'll pick up in the evening again, but this is, this is the data collected. I just include the rest of these, just to give you a sense of how that progresses over time. Orange, green is optimal, meaning it's sort of eighty percent occupied, and if you're, if you're paying for paving the lot, operating it, doing whatever you need, snow removal, maintenance, then typically eighty percent is ideal, because it means people coming there can generally find a space. Anything in red, and you don't really have anything in red, means that it's functionally full. And anything in the light blue colors means it's pretty empty. So, I guess the things to note are, close to where your public supply is, there's some informal lots that are pretty empty, and, you know, that could be.
Oh, that's down by the old highway road.
That's right, exactly, highways are all right across there.
And, you know, we've got a sign up to show that there's a public parking here.
There is, yes.
Right there, yeah. Right out that corner.
Yeah.
But a lot of people don't know it's there, and it's too far to walk to get anywhere.
The egress to and from there for people is difficult.
Yeah.
It gets me used out for the overflow for the thrift shop.
Yep. That's about it.
That's one of the recommendations coming forward, to make that more attractive, so that people feel safe, that it's lit, there's a path to actually get there, so that they would use it.
Totally, and by the time you see that sign, it's too late.
It's too late, yeah, a lot of sight there, certainly, and where it is on that pole, but it was where we could find. So it was a difficult logistic stuff.
Totally, no, exactly, it's easy for me to sit here and say these things as well, so. So, you know, as you'd expect, on-street parking in front of the businesses is full, and, you know, this happens everywhere. The employees will end up parking in the prime customer spaces, so, you know, really you want to find a way to separate those two groups out, and so any long-term parkers, more than three, four hours, you want to try to encourage them to park elsewhere and free up the most convenient spaces to support the businesses. I mean, having said that, it's interesting to me in the survey, people don't report having a big issue finding parking downtown. You guys, you know, if you think of a scale of crisis in terms of parking, you know, from zero up to a hundred here, you guys are at a sort of, compared to other places that I work in, you're like at a twenty or a thirty percent maybe. You know, like, we come, work in certain downtowns, and you'll see the whole frontage here is red, and the merchants are like, you know, it's affecting our businesses, we can't do, get deliveries made, we don't know where to put our employees, blah, blah, blah. So I'm not saying you don't have a problem, but I'm just saying it's not, it's not crisis.
It's not as serious as other places.
You know, you've got a chance to do things right sooner, rather than letting it get to a point where it's a problem and then having to fix it, you know, which I think is good.
I think in that prime area, Erin found there were ten cars that were there all day. So there are probably ten employees that are.
Right, so you guys asked us something we don't always do, but it was, it was interesting data to have too, which is turnover, to get a sense of how many people are doing what we just described, you know, just sitting there all day. And then there was a decent number of people, enough to take up what limited on-street spaces you already have, so.
So those are ten on the on-street, really, I thought we got that message out to people.
Well, you know, it's interesting, it depends on how you look at the numbers. If you look at the entire Main Street from the entire area that we included in this scope, there were seventy on-street parking spaces, which I had to recount multiple times. But when you actually crunch it down and just look in front of Lux and the banks and the post office and right that area that it's busiest, that's where the ten hang out.
Really?
Yeah.
But all day?
All day.
Last fall, we were doing out down the.
That's a matter of just talking.
For the Main Street project, was those same cars every single day vying for those spots in front of there where I might have to move, or if I hadn't cone off, because the crews were going to be tearing that section up, but it was those same ones.
And we can all, we can all name them, we can all name them too.
Yes, yes.
And they're employees.
Many of them would not have.
Owners are employees.
And sometimes stores.
Well, we're assuming, and they're there all day for eight hours, we're assuming they're employees. It was nine in the morning until four.
So the way the turnover works is, before we did the utilization counts, we did, we checked license plates. And so I would write down a license plate at eight in the morning. Then I went back at eleven, and around lunchtime, and then again at four.
So we took the license plates.
We just have to, we have to work on that, that's, this is a.
We're not saying it's not fixable, but it's just what the.
We do have a recommendation about it.
Downtown and everything else, it's just a thing that ought to get.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's in one of them.
Yeah, that's right.
Fifteen minute parking here.
So this is just a summary overall, across the entire system, you know, again, why I'm saying you're not really at a tipping point necessarily yet, although of course, all these occupied spaces are where people most want to be. So, but, you know, your system, even at the peak, is not more than fifty percent used. And if you look at that stretch of Main Street, that's very walkable. We're not talking about distances that are not, you know, all these three hundred and twenty-nine spaces, not a problem, then it tails off. Then when you focus just on the Main Street area, you, you know, you again barely get above fifty percent, and that actually is more typical, where you've got a peak at around lunchtime, maybe people are going to the bakery or.
Right, I think what gets people upset is that you're not sure if you're going to come across supply. So you drive down trying to get close to the business you're going to, only to find all those spaces are filled. You have to turn around and come back to park on one of the ends of Main Street, or you find the location, so.
They just want predictability and.
Exactly, so there's something in the recommendations to that as well.
Exactly. That was our reach, I did just open up this map and start looking at things, in the bakery earlier, and it was interesting. I'm not going to go through all these, let me see, I'll just pick out some ones that I thought were really good. You know, better way finding more signs pointing to public parking.
Is it from the visioning?
Yep, yep. You know, walkability, which actually relates hugely to parking, because then people don't mind walking a little bit farther if it's comfortable. I saw you guys have just put sidewalks in on Main Street with granite curbing and everything, that's great. More lighting, we were just talking about lighting earlier. You know, you can probably retrofit that, like you're saying, with solar, since you don't, can't pay for electricity right now. There's congestion at the post office, people are pretty upset about that. Some bright spark came up with the idea of installing a mailbox somewhere else to, so that people wanting to drop off things aren't all congregating in the same place, that seems like.
Which is interesting, we used to have that, and then it was taken away. So it could be that the post office felt that it was too much time to go to the, you know, extra box that was in the shopping center, but that was great, it was right along the curb, we could pull right up, drop it in, and keep going. And now it's all congested, so we did have it, we have to go back to the post office to save that supply.
Do you have copies of this stuff?
It's all on the website.
It is?
Yeah.
And we'll send these to you guys, this, I, we've tweaked these slightly over the last week or so, so we'll get these to you guys.
It's under the Downtown Revitalization.
But what's nice is, you know, if you choose to proceed on some of these, particularly the ones that maybe people are resistant to, whether they cost more or whatever, you can say, well, you know, you guys, this is what we, we had a workshop, and this is what we heard from you, and we agree with a lot of these. One interesting one as well is share the parking in the shopping center of the public use. I know the owners started towing people, and what have.
And not towing, but he put up some Jersey Gary block off spots, which now are chains, but it did take about twenty spots closest to where people want to go and shop.
Right, so there's strategies there, obviously it's going to be up to him at the end of the day, but there are sort of in-kind services that if he agreed to open up that parking supply again.
And that means you, Gary.
Right, you know, you know, maybe the, and I'm not, you know, you guys have to decide on this, but maybe you could plow his lot once or twice during the winter, like, quid pro quo, you know, just to suggest you. This is just where the people park, most people typically, this is typical park on-street, you know, taking out the prime spaces, and that's certainly reflected in the data. This is great, so people are already accustomed to parking once, and then walking to multiple destinations, because sometimes there's resistance to that, there's just a culture. I work all over the country, and it's very different in the south, I don't think it's just because of the weather either. But, you know, people want to be able to drive right out to the front of every place they go to, and then, you know, even if they're only two minutes away from each other. I'm not going to go into that. I thought it was going to get a whole political conversation.
We walk.
How far people will even walk.
Well, people are willing to park once and then go to different stores.
They walk a slightly longer distance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's good, there's a, there's a sort of willingness or a culture around walking around downtown.
But isn't that, isn't that driven in large part by the fact that it's a relatively compact.
I think so, yeah, I think so.
It's a big area.
You might have more resistance.
But there's nothing to walk around downtown.
You just put these nice sidewalks in though, but, yeah. So this was interesting too. And this speaks to a better, balanced, more calibrated parking system. So people will ask the question, what would you rather have, parking right out front or find parking quickly? Because, and walk further to a destination, and to me, that suggests that they recognize that you can't have everyone parking out front, that system's not working now. At least maybe have a system where, you know, you know you could find parking, because it's a little bit further away, but then you, then you have a short walk, so, anyway. The other thing we did was, this, this is a land use and parking demand model that basically takes the square footage, I think probably from the assessor's office for downtown, and maps what parking demand would look like, generated by a manual that engineers and traffic planners use, to sort of see what that profile of demand looks like over the course of the day by use. So this color here, you don't really have to necessarily, I'm sorry, this is so small.
No, that's fine.
But, you know, office, bank, library, these are your actual land uses by square footage, and it makes an estimate of how many people are going to be, how many parking spaces or demand this is, each of those uses are going to generate over the course of the day. What's interesting, and this is where, you know, if you're a transportation nerd, like I am, you go out in the field and then see how well it actually, what the engineers say maps to your downtown, and it's not bad. This is a pretty decent fit, so we literally mapped those time periods. You know, there, it's not, not so good. I mean, I guess it's saying that there's a steeper drop-off in demand in the afternoon than you guys actually observed. That, that's one thing I would say. But then what we do is, this maybe doesn't matter here, but it's an interesting exercise to do, and we've been doing it for all our smaller studies, is to say, if you were to double the amount of, say, office and retail, add two restaurants, add some residential units downtown, could your system still absorb that new demand? And this, that's really all this exercise is trying to do, and it's saying, you know, you would not need to add supply. However, that is of course including all your public and private parking supply downtown right now. So this is not based on just a projection of demand and public supply, it's your entire seven hundred spaces, which includes, you know, everything we looked at, all those off-street lots, et cetera.
Yeah, for example, Village Shopping Center, that he says you can.
Correct.
My lot.
Yep, yep.
Exactly, and, you know, the principle behind that as well is, is that the best practices these days, and what most towns are starting to do, is to institute shared parking requirements or provisions, so that, you know, a developer that maybe is willing to share the parking lot with, say, a use in the evening that doesn't coincide with the peak demand during the middle of the day, and they can do that. And you're not, you're not overbuilding parking, which is a classic problem everywhere, you know, you're obviously.
Really? Is it a problem?
Yeah, everywhere. You know, you walk around downtowns, and, you know, there's, there's two things working in opposite directions. People want more walkable, economically vital downtowns, but then everything's getting paved over with parking as well. Not, not in every community, but, you know, those two things are working against each other.
One of the things I think we have working against development in our downtown are those parking requirements, but it's preventing people from.
Because they're too high.
So for instance, we've got someone who has buildings downtown who would like to expand the number of apartments, but their lot does not accommodate the number of parking spaces that zoning requires.
Because you have a minimum requirement that is excessively.
So it's one her bedroom or whatever, so we would, you know, they can't expand. So we don't have overdevelopment of parking, but we don't have.
True.
The development of the apartments that we would like, because we're constrained.
Right, yes, that's exactly right.
And just back to that slide that you just had, Tom? Those fifty percent increase in office to restaurant twenty-four or more housing units, like apartments, those were taken from the strategic plan. That is what we were projecting in there, and we asked, could you run the model to make sure that we have enough right now so that we could move ahead without running into a parking issue? So that's where those numbers came from, for the projection.
Exactly. So, you know, first recommendation, and I'll describe these, that these maps are a little hard to see, but install, you know, what you could be, what could be intercept public parking signs at each end of town to direct people. Maybe you could have one at the MBTA lot at one end of town, if it's not too far, because that's, that's technically public, and at the weekends it's available. Put another sign maybe up here, so that people know before they get to School Street that there's, that there's parking there. But this is sort of, you know, low-hanging fruit that you could do. Create, and also, this stuff is really useful, creating a parking map for the town website, it just, and it will tell you, if you want longer-term parking, or if you're coming to downtown Top School and you want to use the rail trail, here's where you go, so that you separate the spaces by the, you match the users to the spaces. So if you're a customer, you really want, and the businesses really want people to be able to park there for those short, quick visits, picking up a cup of coffee or whatever, and try to get other people like employees, longer-term visitors to other spaces. That's, that's really the sort of the key goal of all this.
Erin and Liza had also made a good recommendation on those signs where you're pointing to parking, to put short-term, long-term, so that when people look at the signs, if they're coming in from out of town, they know which direction to head, depending on what they're going to be doing in the town.
You know, this is a classic one, pursue shared parking agreements with Top School Shopping Center, St. Rose of Lima, Catholic Church, and local shop owners. You know, it can begin in something more informal, maybe where there's in-kind services provided, you know, up to maybe formalizing shared parking agreements between different property owners, which requires, you know, legal instruments, you know, you have to ramp that up over time. But, you know, the goal would be to try to target especially some of these parkers that are maybe low turnover and are using up the most sort of valuable spaces. So that would really be people like employees. Or after-hours, which I don't think is a problem at all, you guys have no parking demand really in the evening right now. The other thing is to create. There's nothing to go to. Create two-hour, usually we don't like time limits, it's better to control everything with pricing and give people the flexibility, but in this case, since there's plenty of supply within a short walk, we recommend actually instituting a two-hour limit. You could do it on a smaller section of Main Street and see how it goes, and then maybe expand it over time to see how successful it is. But again, the goal is to get those longer-term parkers out of those prime spaces. It also means, you know, whoever ends up doing that enforcement, I'm assuming it'll be the police department.
It would, I talked to them about it.
Okay, that's, how did they receive it?
Oh, and, first of all, it was very precursor. I questioned whether or not they were really anxious to be involved at all.
I, that was a good thing to ask them.
In an enforcement issue. And the chief said, you know, we do it now, but we don't have time limits, okay? But they do issue parking tickets. And what spurred my conversation was the fact I was standing at front door one day, and somebody came in and wanted to know where to go pay his parking ticket. So that stimulated my interest in that, I'll go talk to the chief and see if they do that, and they do issue parking.
I mean, you know, and it, but, you know, you could look at the utilization data we have and maybe just do a sweep in the morning, you know, when it's busiest at nine. And you don't have, obviously you have to do it all the time, but you do that once or twice, and people begin starting.
The two-hour, the two-hour parking limit signed by itself would be some kind of an important.
Yeah, it's true, we're something to point to.
Just put the sign up, and people will say, hey, maybe I better do something like that.
You know, but then the other thing, I mean, you're so close to Town Hall here, if someone went out and just counted before, go to, I mean, we have the before counts now, and then go out after and see, after you do the enforcement, you know, what the success is, looks like. The other thing as well is, we're not, you know, a lot of bigger towns or cities end up farming out there, parking much further down the road to private companies, and they make money through enforcement, and that's bad business on so many levels. So along that same, in that spirit, what we always recommend, and actually Liza just made this cute little ticket yesterday, you, what you could do is leave a little note on people's dashboard, just saying, you know, this is your first free ticket, here's a parking map of downtown, and next time if you're here for more than two hours, here's your long-term parking. And it's just, the police will find that much, much.
That would be, oh, of course.
Nice idea.
So, multimodal improvements, so this is, this is a quick study, this is a grand term for what it really is. You know, this is not really a detailed assessment of walking and biking needs, but, you know, you guys already spoke about this earlier, but definitely lighting, there's no sidewalks on, is it School Street?
Yeah, no sidewalks.
So. So, you know, that really should be a, a priority. It would be a good bang for your buck because you are gonna connect some of your longer term parkers then, and they'll, they'll feel safer. Um, you definitely need to add lighting down there as well. And then, I heard you talking, I didn't fully pick up on where the locations were, but there are a relatively limited amount. Maybe this has changed in the, since we came out in June. Have you added crosswalks in the last two or three, to this section of Main Street? Okay, everything's just repainted. So I know there's interest also in adding a, potentially a new crosswalk here. And if you're adding, if you're going to advertise the public parking supply here, and there are destinations on this side of the street, it'll be important to do that. You know, at, at the right location. So we do recommend that.
Is that Central Street?
That is. That's just, I'm a little turn back.
It seems as though there's one block. And you have one crosswalk up by the big shop, and then you have one, oh, just past locks.
Yes.
Yeah, Central Street, yes.
So then that mid-block, it's pretty long without a crosswalk, um, especially if it's on either side.
From School Lab to Central.
Yeah, yeah. So just somewhere along that mid-block.
But, well, oh, issue, well, there is one there that crosses, and then the two entrances to the Village Shopping Center parking. But there's no curb cut now, nor is there, uh, handicap access to put one mid-block. We would have had to have changed that when we did downtown. Partially too with that areas because of the part of maybe enforcement, the speed and stepping out in certain areas of people from parking.
And you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose parking spaces, cause you really have to have.
You have to. You need to clear them. You decide.
The place where it crosses and before then.
Yep.
That's always a suggestion, but I'm.
But it is a long.
Yeah, it needs a lot more.
A lot, a lot of talk.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. You know, the other, the other observation, and this is more in the, in the spirit of it, you know, if you can add bicycle racks, you have, Liza actually, she probably told you this, but, you know, she lives in Beverly, but she's come out here before. So, you know, Topsfield is very scenically appealing. You're having people from out of town. You know, you wanna encourage them, and if they're going to the rail trail anyway, and then they wanna go get a coffee, there should, there should be bike racks and amenities for them. And this is like an economic development aspect.
And you're already moving forward with that, right?
Yeah, I went out to take a look because, um, we've gotten the, the recommendation from the students. They put together a whole package of what they're looking for. And then Robin had found some, um, money with the funds that we get for the Uber and Lyft rides from the state. Um, so we had about seven hundred and eighty dollars that we have to use for multimodal transportation. So we said, why don't we take a look at the, the bike racks? We actually have bike racks.
There's some down by.
There are two sets. There's one down by Cargill, um, and St. Rose's that parking lot is about twelve. Um, they accommodate twelve bikes there. Then there's another set, again, abutting the rail trail over by the tot lot and the tennis courts. So, um.
You just need someone in between now so they can go to the stores.
Yes, that's what they were looking for in front of, um, Gil's and Alex's. Um, Alex has very little space there, but Gil was amenable to putting a bike rack there as long as it wasn't anchored into the ground, because then it makes it difficult for plowing and leave, gathering, et cetera. But the kids come and just drop their bikes all over the sidewalk there anyway, and then he has to.
You see them all the time.
Move them away from the door. So he was amenable to having something put there.
It's hilarious the way the, uh, the elementary school is next to the bakery. Cause we, we were just in there when school got out, and all of a sudden, a lot of little girls came in ordering whoopee pies and stuff.
So we actually have racks to accommodate seventy bikes. I think actually what might be a problem are the locks, because the, I, I've been seeing bikes on the ground beside the bike racks. They're not in the, the bike racks. Um, so they, they put them on the ground. I don't know, you know, if it's very short term, or if they're not leaving them long term, they're taking them with them all throughout town if they don't have locks. You have to dig in a little bit to find out.
It's easier. You just still lay them on the ground.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's quicker.
Yeah, you, you guys probably know this, but the U-locks are the ones that they always recommend. Cause it has two points of contact for locking up the front wheel and the, you know, the frame. So if you do put them in, you should always do the U-locks. U-racks, sorry, U-racks.
What's that pedestrian, where are tops on a street?
So I think these are just.
It's just connecting around the, um.
It's like it's around the library.
That, that's all private property, though.
It's, it's just a recommendation of where there might, if, if there's possible to make a connection, um, from that back public line. It, it's just a recommendation. It's not doable. That's, okay, but just something to think about.
We didn't, wasn't attempting to do that, but we didn't quite shoot it right.
No, I mean, a little.
The, uh, next to the, next to the library, that condo, that, which is Dr. Rogers' house. My intent was to have the town buy that, but I didn't get a lot of support from my colleagues at the time. But it was exactly for that purpose. And, and, and for parking for the library, because the library does need parking. It's a problem.
So final thing, sorry, I've probably gone a little too long here, but, uh, exactly what we said earlier. Um, we compared, um, your, uh, parking minimum requirements for, you know, retail and office, and they are way above. And exactly as Lynn was saying, it's, it's a, it's a barrier to, to potential development because, um, they would have to comply with these parking standards that would make it just un-economical to be able to develop the small lots. So, uh, definitely recommend reconsidering those minimums, adjust them or, or eliminate them. Um, introduce, uh, shared parking requirements so that, uh, you have some sort of official way of allowing different uses with, with complimentary peak times. You know, restaurant and, um, uh, residential or, um, commercial and residential typically have different peak demand times for parking, and so you can reduce the overall amount of parking needed. Allow change of use below a certain threshold, meaning that if you have a, uh, store downtown that changes use to something else, um, you don't slap them with suddenly a new set of parking requirements. As long as they don't trigger a certain threshold, you know, if you're putting a dental office in and it generates a lot of traffic, that's one way maybe you would want to require parking. But if it's just going from, you know, X, Y, Z use to, to something fairly similar, you don't want to then apply the new parking requirements to them because it's gonna prevent them from opening a business and, you know. Require bicycle parking potentially. Design considerations, I think what is said here, I'm not totally familiar with this, but generally what we recommend is, you know, where you have most of your foot traffic, the children coming out of the school, walking to the bakery, where you've put all the mon- dollars into the new, uh, sidewalks. Really try to think of that pathway from the pedestrian point of view. You know, when you add and extend that network, really limit, limit the number of curb cuts on the main streets, on the main thoroughfares, and put them on the sides as much as possible. Also, see if there's ways to do things like have one way in and one way out so that the driveways themselves don't need to be so wide, because those, those can be very unsafe as well for people walking. You know, big wide, people swinging in, you know, in their cars, you know, coming in on, off the main thoroughfare into side lots on excessively wide curb cuts. You know, it's a real challenge for a downtown that's trying to encourage people to walk around on foot.
You didn't particularly identify ones that we should look at or.
I don't know. I mean, I could, I could do it now probably, but.
I was just wondering if you, in the.
Yeah, I wonder if.
In the proposal, did you identify?
Why don't we, why don't we do, we, we can do that easy enough, because we can just measure it.
And it gives us things to think about.
Yeah, definitely, sure.
So all of these recommendations, and I think this is the last one, right?
It is the last one.
Yeah, so all of these recommendations are going to be wrapped up into a final report. This was our last. Do you, does the board approve of these recommendations before we write it and we submit it back?
So we'll add that.
So it'll be more detailed, um, with recommendations for the zoning changes, um, where you can, um, put those crosswalks in, in the long, long term.
We'll take out that walking path.
Um, looking at the curb cuts. All of that will be in the recommendation, in, in the final report. Will be a much longer version of these slides, so nothing new that you haven't seen.
Yeah, yeah.
This is kind of a last chance to ask anything, if we wanted something else incorporated or anything looked at before they wrap up. I mean, we can consider the recommendations after the final report.
Also, you know, we'll send these to you. Look at them, and then, and then, I mean, and then we, we can take, take comments too.
Well, most of this is, as you point out, up, up now, it's, this is an updated, you, you tweaked it some. I think it's important to perhaps get that for the next meeting or whatever.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll definitely give you.
As long as we call it version one, version two, or.
Be clear about.
Do, do something so it's very clear to somebody that they're. I would rename the first one to version one or something so that we know that there's something else coming or whatever. I don't, just keep control of it.
Yep.
We can definitely give you these, um, and you can write us comments over the next week or so. Um, we're going to begin wrapping up the report, um, cause I know Lynn had requested it, um, so that you guys can start thinking about it in your next plan.
You're doing it downtown.
A lot of data to chew on, in my opinion. It's good input stuff for us because
We need like in two weeks.
We've, we've suffered here for a long time, not knowing what the situation really was downtown.
Yeah.
How much of that is being utilized on a twelve-hour-a-day basis by employees. Well, we find out it's not as big a deal as we thought it was, you said, ten.
It depends on the area you're going. I mean, if you look at the whole stretch, it sounds like it's not a big deal. But when you go to the area that everybody is going to, um, they would like to park centrally and walk to a couple.
From the big shop to the Topsfield Crossing, that's the area.
And the thing is, that's enough to make everyone think that it's a really big problem, because everyone wants to be there.
Have the businesses weighed in on these?
Say again?
Have businesses seen this?
And they must be.
They have seen the recommendations. We did, um, at the workshop, we had a table. I don't know if anyone was able to visit, but, um, we were asking them there, like, what would you recommend for Topsfield? So all of these recommendations are, come straight out of what we've seen in other towns, what best practices are, but then also what you are specific to Topsfield though, exactly what we heard.
We had two business sessions, working group sessions, where we asked them about their concerns with parking. So the issue was discussed. They just haven't seen these final recommendations. So they'll be incorporated into the strategic plan that then goes back out to businesses and residents for comment.
I, I personally would be trying to look for a way to, uh, help our parking situation downtown without creating a police state.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we wanna make it nasty for people.
I agree.
And suggest finding and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And like I said, a two-hour.
Suggestion.
A two-hour limit sign might be enough.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I mean.
That, that by itself is gonna scare people.
I, I would, I would, you know, recognizing that small towns, I live in one myself, have limited resources. I think that's the way to go. I think, uh, mo- monitor the effectiveness of these things. See if there's improvement. If people, really, there are a few scofflaws, you'll, you've, the police will rapidly figure out who they are.
And we know already some folks that we could talk with if they don't understand the impact because of the turnover study. We do know who the, the town were, so we could reach out.
We know some of them.
And share.
That are there every day.
To that point, um, one part of the, um, report will be a ten tips of how to do parking utilization. So that in six months, in a year, when you wanna say, was this effective? You can go back out and count the cars in a very similar manner to the way I did it. Um, and you can see if these are actually working, and if you do need to expand that two-hour time zone, or if it's meeting your needs.
Yep, good.
I had a general question, just listening. It sounds like we have enough parking in total, the public and private together. There may be some lots. To really optimize a development, they wouldn't have enough parking. Can't we combine the two? For example, if you have a small lot, can't somebody totally build it up? And for some monetary reason, contribute maybe to the shopping center, buy the rights of parking, or put some money into a parking trust.
Yeah.
But combine holistically the whole downtown area, not this parcel requires this kind.
So, yes, but I, I think you guys are a long way off.
It's a little, maybe a little bit complicated.
It's a lot of private lots, so the, the town cannot step in and tell it that it has to.
Oh, I understand. I just want your, from your experience, well, do towns do this?
They do, they do. There's like, you could designate an area that has a payment in lieu of parking. And so if you really can't provide it on your lot, it's a part of a district.
Right. And I might go into a trust for the ODPW site. Upgrade that, put lighting in, take the building out, whatever.
Right.
I, I don't know, but it just seems like we ought to be able to put it together somehow.
Which I, I think some of those recommendations do get at that, looking at it more holistically.
Definitely.
As opposed to parcel by parcel, as you're saying.
Because the, the total, we have enough.
Right. It's just, how do you utilize that? What arrangements do you work out with people?
And some of it can be informal. So in Hyannis, uh, they, a bunch of businesses along a section of that Main Street that is really long, but behind one, they just took down fences between businesses, and they did it informally. And in a way, that's the best arrangement, because town stays out of it. You know, there's no legal nonsense. There's not too much money or anything involved, but they've just come to an arrangement. So there's probably a row of about, you know, eight or nine businesses, and there's just a general lot behind. So sometimes it's, it could be as common sense as, hey, you guys are right next to each other. You have a parking problem. Why don't you just, you know, expand your supply here and make, make ingress and egress easier? So, uh, sort of, it's like baby steps like that, but you're never gonna hear me advocating for building more parking. It's, it's sort of, to me, it's the anathema of everything downtown. And you don't really need it. You don't need it.
Was there ever a survey done for the amount of spots in the Village Shopping Center?
Yeah.
Actual.
Yeah, we have that.
We have.
It's, it is.
Yeah, so, um, one of our maps has every single parking lot.
Yeah, and all this is documented on spreadsheets and everything. You guys will get the whole.
Did I drop that realization just within the Village Shopping? Yeah, and other places, and then they combined.
This day, going forward, where that to be something to be done. The configuration of how that, because it was done so many decades ago. I think there are better ways of maximizing spaces down there that isn't being done, obviously, for obvious reasons, because it's private property and the unwillingness of the landlord to take care of that. But you could probably maximize a lot more in there as well.
You definitely could. We were looking at that.
And you've got an egress and, and, and the rail trail that is right there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
For bikes and those kinds of things that where things were a little.
You could make it more attractive as well and safer. You know, it's kind of a mess there with the.
Taking the islands out, the, you know, there are ways, I'm sure, engineers could do better than I could think of, but just thinking of the total area of what's available there. Well, I think, I think Lynn and John are beginning to develop some sort of communication with that guy, so.
We'll sketch something up. Seriously, we will look, cause it's so funny you mention that, cause we were looking at that yesterday. That exact area, like this is a mess. There's actually opportunity to add spaces here and make it more appealing and safer.
Yeah, I bet.
So there's definitely instances like that. And actually, those are potential ins with a, with a, a, a property owner who's a little bit resistant to the town telling them what to do, because you come in with a sort of, a more positive hand. You say, hey, look, we can, we think we can help you actually expand your supply here and make it safer and more attractive. I, I don't know. It doesn't always.
We have met with Mr. Flan to share with him that this study was going on, and it would become react with some recommendations just for discussion.
That's great. That's great.
At least we're talking to the guy. We, we went for a long time without talking to him.
That's great. Good.
Um, well, thank you so much for coming, and that was a great overview of it. And, um, Erin, thank you so much for all the time you and Liza put into this. We appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing, if you wanna send me those revised, um, slides, we'll put those up. For everyone's taking a gap.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, we need one final motion.
Of course, I can't imagine what that would be.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Alright. Thank you guys very much.